Yes, sir. Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the regular council meeting in the City of Gulf Shores for February 8th. You notice we are short two folks here tonight. Mayor Craft could not be here with us. He's feeling a little under the weather, so we appreciate your thoughts and prayers for Mayor Craft, so I don't have to do this anymore than I have to. We'd like to start with the invocation from Reverend Larry Woods from St. Andrews by the Sea Church. Thank you for being here.
May we bow together? Our gracious God, we thank you for this day and for this good community, which has been brought even more closely together in the last year. We ask your grace today for the mayor and for the council members. We pray for good health for them all. And we also ask your grace for us as a community, that we might serve one another well. You are bringing health in many ways. We thank you for that and pray that you will help us to see the ways that we might bring encouragement to those around us. We ask these blessings for each other in the name of the God of us all, and I ask these things in the name of my Lord Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thanks, sir. Go ahead and sign the pledge of allegiance, please.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wanda, would you call roll, please?
Mr. Garrus?
Here.
Mr. Harris?
Here.
Dr. Dyken?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Okay, we do have a quorum, so the first item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. We have two sets of minutes. The first from the January 25th rescheduled council work session and regular council meeting combined.
Go ahead.
Move for the approval of the minutes from the January 25th meeting?
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval of the January 25th minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved. Second set is from the February 1st council work session meeting.
Move for the approval of the minutes of the council work session meeting of February 1st, 2021.
Second.
Have a motion and a second for the minutes from February 1st. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Stand.
One extension noted. Minutes are approved. Next, we have the approval for expense vouchers in the amount of $1,297,810.73. Cindy?
Yes, sir. $633,000 was for a fire vehicle. That's an engine. And $141,000 was for Hurricane Sally-related expenses, and the rest, $277,000, were for capital improvements, the bulk of which was for the beachwalking district. So, once you net those out, there were only about $200,000 of regular operating expenses.
Okay. Any questions for Cindy on the expense vouchers? Thank you, Cindy.
Move for the approval of expense vouchers as presented.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the expense vouchers as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Expense vouchers are approved. Next, we have presentation and petitions. We have a special presentation from Chief Sealy.
Good afternoon. Appreciate your time. I want to present a couple of firefighter achievement awards today. Stone Collins and Nick in Agostopolis, would you guys come forward, please? These guys just completed the smoke diver class at Alabama Fire College in Tuscaloosa, and that word can be, the smoke divers. A lot of people don't understand what that is, and it's hands down the most physically and mentally demanding course at the fire college or in the fire service. I can tell you that. I went through many years ago. I can tell you that less than one-tenth of 1% of Alabama firefighters that are certified in this state have this certification, and we're now blessed to have six on our department now. It's a very, very challenging course, I can tell you that, and while they may not look like it, they're in outstanding shape. They absolutely blew it away. I was very proud to be their chief up there watching them. There's firefighters from all over the state that takes this class, and what it does, it teaches you a lot of advanced, and if really, obviously, an advanced class that teaches you a lot about self-rescue if you get in a bad situation, in addition to teaching you how to rescue victims in some really weird situations and things like that that firefighters often find themselves in. And in addition to the very physical nature of it, where you fail one event, you go home. Like I said, it used to be like a 50% fail rate in this class through the years, at least more than 50%, and now more are passing, and I attribute that to year-round training. Most departments have people that train year-round to go to this. It's only offered one time, so it's really hard to get into, but these guys, to their credit, they didn't start training until probably October, so, and then they went and blew the thing away. So, very, very proud of them, and you should be too. That's why I wanted to announce that. So, have I got any questions about anything I didn't cover about what the class is about?
Just on behalf of the mayor and the council, we'd like to congratulate both of you gentlemen for going that extra mile and taking that class and completing and succeeding in that program. Thank you both.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Chief. Next, we have a public hearing on the zoning text amendment for garage setbacks. Lee, are you going to give us an update presentation on that? Wanda, with this being an ordinance and only four members here, we'll need all four votes to pass this ordinance. Is that correct?
That's correct. Exactly.
Lee?
Thank you. Mayor Protim, good afternoon, councilman. This is zoning text amendment 20-06, the garage setbacks text amendment. There are three items associated with this request that are amendments to the zoning ordinance. The first is to amend Article 6-3i Garage Setbacks for Dwellings on Narrow Lots in order to permit options for single-family houses on smaller lots. Number two is to amend Table 7-1b Area and Dimensional Requirements or Regulations for Residential Districts to increase the front yard setbacks and the building coverage. And item number three is to amend Article 7-1b Area and Dimensional Regulations for Residential Districts to add savings clauses for preliminary subdivision plats. Now, number three is an addition from the Cal meeting back in January. There were some questions about preliminary plats that had been reviewed or submitted, as well as planned unit developments. There's not a savings clause for planning unit developments because planning unit developments, by their very nature, they are overlays over the existing underlying zoning, and the planning unit developments that are approved that would be impacted, that either overlay R1-4 or R1-5, have established setbacks that the council has adopted. Therefore, any setbacks that are amended by this zoning ordinance are superseded by those PUD master plan overlay setbacks. So, there's no need for a savings clause for PUDs in particular. So, going back to the Vision 2025 Plan, the plan states that maintaining and enhancing the physical qualities of the city is an overarching consideration of the Vision 2025 Future Land Use Plan. It goes on to say that Gulf Shores intends to implement land development policies that promote quality design, human interaction, socioeconomic well-being, health, and natural disaster mitigation and recovery. One component of the Vision 2025 Plan is the future land use component, and the Future Land Use Plan states that human scale should be created through building mass and form, as well as scale and detail. Building locations, setbacks, and orientation should frame, encourage, and enhance pedestrian comfort. The implementation strategy that's associated with that goal is to modify the zoning ordinance to require appropriate placement and design of new buildings. Buildings should be designed to provide human scale, reinforce pedestrian circulation, and maximize active building street frontage. So, why is garage placement important? Other than to implement our Vision 2025 Plan, it's important based on pedestrian safety, some cars pulling into and backing out of driveways and garages, walkability, just the physical ability for pedestrians to navigate sidewalks, whether there are impediments in their way or not, and also pedestrian comfort, just the comfort associated with the building that helps enclose the sidewalk and is close to the sidewalk that's occupied and not necessarily garage space for cars. So, the first amendment is to amend Article 6-3i Guard Regulations, which today requires a five-foot recess in the garage just across the board for lots that are 50 feet wide or less, and this would propose to amend that article to limit driveways to 18 feet in width at the front property line. And currently, there's no regulation limiting driveway width, and it's typical in zoning ordinances to have for residential development to have some limitation on driveway width so that you're not paving an entire front yard. Also, in this proposal are standards for optional garage placement, so there are two options that we'll go through that are up to the builder to take advantage of or not. So, driveway width, you know, today, without a standard, we have very wide driveways that are being constructed with new home development, so this proposal would limit that driveway width at the front property line to 18 feet. Of course, if there's a three-car garage or a golf cart garage, it could be widened out within that 40-foot setback in order to accommodate access into an additional garage. But minimizing that driveway width, you know, cuts down on the ability or the conflict between a pedestrian and an automobile turning into or out of that driveway. So, going into the garage options that are part of 6-3i, there's one option, which is a recess garage. Now, right now, in 50-foot wide lots, there's a requirement, four or five-foot recess. This is an option, and there's an amendment that we'll get to, second, that is establishing a minimum setback of 40 feet for R1-5 and R1-4, but this, if a builder chooses this option, would place the garage at 40 feet, but then would have the ability to move the actual, the habitable portions of the home closer to the street, so within 20 to 35 feet of the front setback. That does a couple of things. That brings, you know, that enclosure to the sidewalk. It brings activity. Maybe it's a front porch where people can interact from the sidewalk, but it also helps to screen some of the cars as pedestrians walk down the street. They're not just seeing cars parked in front of garages. The one caveat to that is the garage width maximum is 50% of the overall house. Again, that's so when you don't, you're just not taking up the full frontage of the house just with places to park cars. Rear yard setback is reduced to 25 feet in R1-5 and 35 feet in R1-4. So, the image to the right, you can see it's currently 30. They would, that red kind of copper color would be increased square footage with the decrease of that setback. And then individual garage door, rather than just open-ended, however wide it could be, separating the two-car garage into two individual garage doors, sometimes referred to as carriage doors, again, just minimizes the impact of that large garage door on the pedestrian environment. These are some existing examples of recess garages. It can be, you know, as the standard suggests, it can be as little as a five-foot recess, or it can be up to 20 feet, like you can see in that larger image to the left. Again, just pulling that garage farther off the street and projecting the habitable portions of the house closer to the sidewalk. The second option for builders would be a side-loaded projecting garage. We have a lot of these in Craft Farms, in Craft Farms North, so we should all be pretty familiar with these. The garage is located entirely in front of the house, so the garage can be just set back 20 feet with the primary building being at 40 feet, the required setback, and the rear setback could be reduced, again, five feet in order to make up for any loss in buildable area. So, these are all Craft Farms North, actually, with the side-loaded projecting where you have the garage that comes forward and the house is set back at 40 feet, and these lots are all very similar to what we found in the R1-5 zoning district. So, the second text amendment is an amendment to Table 7-1b. This is, these are what we refer to as the bulk standards. This is a table that you go to to see how tall your building could be, how it needs to be set back, what the building coverage is. This table tells us just about everything we need to know about residential zoning districts. So, the areas highlighted in yellow are proposed changes. The first one is to amend the maximum density, which is the dwelling units per acre for the R1-5 zoning district. So, the R1-5 zoning district was changed back early 2019, and the maximum density was not changed. So, the minimum lot size was increased, but there wasn't a change to the maximum density. So, really, it's seven today, based on the 6,000-square-foot lot size. The lot size went to 8,000, so we need to change that from seven units per acre to five. It's really just a housekeeping item, but that's that number one. The second item here is to amend the maximum building coverage for the R1-5 zoning district from 35 to 40. If you were to apply the setbacks today for R1-5, you exceed the 35% coverage. So, we felt that with those garage placement options, the two options where you can actually increase your building coverage, we really need to go ahead and up R1-5 from 35% to 40% allows a little bit more flexibility in the design of the house. And then, number three on this list is the minimum front yard setback for both R1-4 and R1-5 is to increase from 35 feet to 40 feet. And the reason for that is you can take any combination of sport utility vehicle, pickup truck, station wagon, minivan. Do they make station wagons anymore? I don't know. I meant minivan, and they're going to exceed the current 35-foot front setback. So, they're going to overhang the sidewalk. I think we've all probably seen it driving through new subdivisions, that there are typically vehicles that overhang the sidewalk and cause pedestrians to have to walk around the vehicles. But this 40 feet, you can get a standard SUV, pickup truck, minivan within that 40 feet without affecting the walkability of the neighborhood. And the third item, these are the savings clauses, so these are new things. The first is associated with approved preliminary subdivision plats, and a savings clause is also referred to as a grandfathering clause, so it exempts certain conditions from the standards of this amendment. And the first is for approved preliminary subdivision plats. These are subdivision plats that have gone to the planning commission and have received approval and are awaiting final plat and acceptance and construction. So, they are exempt from these standards as long as they have a valid approved preliminary subdivision. If that subdivision plat expires, meaning they don't have any approvals on that property, then, of course, they would be subject to this amended ordinance. The second item is regarding submitted preliminary subdivision plats. So, this is a little bit different. Any preliminary plat that was submitted prior to January 1st, 2021, isn't exempt from the standards, but they do get some relief on that rear setback. So, if we're increasing the front setback from 35 to 40 feet, these submitted preliminary plats can reduce their rear setback in order to gain the five feet they lost in the front. There's only one preliminary plat that has been submitted prior to January 1st, 2021 that hasn't been acted on by the planning commission, that's Rayleigh Farms Phase 2, so it would be, it would have the ability to decrease the rear yard setback in order to have the same buildable area as they did at the time they submitted their plat. And those are the three amendments. Staff does recommend approval. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Lee. Anybody have any questions for Lee? This is a public hearing. If there are any comments or questions from the audience, please come up to the microphone and let us hear your concerns or comments. Richard?
Thank you. Where I need clarity is on subdivisions, or excuse me, on tracks that have been zoned PUDs, but plats within those PUDs haven't been submitted yet, and it's my understanding that these amendments would not apply to lots that are eventually submitted for at least preliminary approval. I don't know if I said that well enough, but Lee, did you understand my question, please?
Yes, and it doesn't apply as long as those PUDs have approved setbacks. So, and I've checked, all the PUDs that have R1-5 or R1-4 underlying zoning, and they all have setbacks that have been adopted and approved by council, and those setbacks would supersede any setbacks that are within the zoning ordinance or associated with this amendment.
Thank you.
Let's clear that.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I know this is a lot of detailed information Lee's gone through, and he's worked on this for a really long time to get it to this point where I think it's an achievable plan and really has the opportunity, as we look at volume building, that we, you know, we put a lot of investment and focus on our pedestrian pathways all throughout the town and community. We require developers to invest money in internal sidewalks, and this will enhance those neighborhoods and enhance the opportunity and walkability by increasing the setbacks, getting the vehicles out of the sidewalks and right of ways, and really help raise the quality of our communities. So, Lee, good work. I know you've put a lot into it, and I know there's a lot of details. If you don't have to understand our ordinances in the business you're in, it's terrible reading. You probably don't want to, but a lot of good efforts gone into this collaboration with the developers that are in our community, helping us grow our communities, and now we've paved an opportunity to, in my opinion, enhance those as we move forward.
And Mr. Harris, also kudos to the planning commission. They've worked on this a couple of three meetings, and I appreciate their hard work, listening to all sides, and I think their recommendation makes a lot of sense.
Agreed. Thank you. Move that we suspend rules of procedure, that we may consider this ordinance?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to suspend the rules. Wanda, would you do roll, please?
Mr. Garrus?
Aye.
Dr. Dyken?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Harris?
Aye.
We now are able to consider ordinance 2008.
Motion to consider ordinance 2008.
Second. Have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance 2008 as presented. Wanda?
Mr. Garrus?
Aye.
Dr. Dyken?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Harris?
Aye.
Ordinance is adopted. Thank you again, Lee. Appreciate all your work from you and your department. Next, under new business, we have Resolution 6376 authorizing the use of municipal credit cards. Cindy, update on that?
There's no change from last week. We're adding five cards and we're moving forward.
Okay.
Move for the adoption of Resolution 6376 and waive its reading?
Second. Have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 70. Let me start over. We have a motion and a second. We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 6376. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution is adopted. Next, we have Resolution 6377, Board Reappointment for Coastal Business Chamber, Mr. Garrus. Wanda?
Yes, sir. This is a reappointment of Councilman Joe Garrus to a term of four years, ending October the 1st, 2024.
Move for the adoption of Resolution 6377 as presented. Second. Have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 6377. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Mr. Garrus.
Thank you, Mr. Garrus.
That's all of the business we have on our agenda today. Do we have any committee reports from anyone? I know we've got a couple of updates. Did Noel make it?
Yes.
Hey, Noel, would you mind giving us an update on the school construction progress?
Yes, sir. So, a couple of weeks ago, y'all approved the Phase 3, the elementary project, the six classrooms and two STEM labs. And we started this past week, you know, this past week, we started with the construction fencing to secure the site. And then, we are in the process of relocating gas lines, the sewer line, drainage lines, to get everything out of the way for the contractor so he can begin the job. Construction trailer's coming in next week. So, we're, we're really on a, I call it now the, the race to Christmas. So, we need to get it completed by Christmas to give them opportunity to be able to move in before the New Year. So, it's a very exciting project. A lot of things going on. The state has the contract right now, and they'll send it back. And so, we're, we're ready to go.
Okay. Thanks, Noel. As always, I know Mayor Craft has, you know, tried to stay, keep everyone informed and focused on any updates on, on the COVID situation and any opportunities there. I think, Grant, do you have any update on vaccine issues or any situations there?
Yes, sir, I sure do. Thank you very much for giving me a few minutes today. Brandon Franklin is our emergency manager, sits on at least weekly calls, if not bi-weekly calls, with Emergency Management Agency out of Robertsdale. And we had a call today even at 3:00, and he actually invited me to sit in with him to listen to what's happening. And there's a little bit of good news. And the good news is that some of the numbers within our state for new infections and hospitalizations are, are coming down. However, we're still under the state health, health orders mandated through at least March the 8th, requiring face coverings. Of course, the national mandate now that exists for public transportation is in effect. So, all planes, trains, automobiles that are for hire, buses, public transportation, people are required to wear face coverings. So, a little closer home within Baldwin County, I guess the biggest issues that we're facing in our county is still the lack of available vaccines. The state, in its entirety, only gets 60,000 to 70,000 doses of vaccines for the first dose each week. And so, they have to distribute those equitably along the entire state. So, that's a big issue right now. Daphne has, had some very good success with their clinic, where people would drive up, get their vaccination, have a card to go back for a second dose. And last week, OWA stood up in Foley and was very successful. I've got on the screen the dates for additional vaccination dates at OWA in Foley. Those are typically Tuesdays and Thursdays. If you look at the date range, except for this coming Thursday, there will not be one. But there will be one tomorrow from 9:00 till 3:00. These are first come, first served. You drive in, enter off of Highway 59, and then you exit out the backside of OWA Down Beach Express. There are maps that'll be available since they update the different phases. We'll put one of those on our, on our website as well as go to the Baldwin EMA website or State Health Department website. Today, the state entered into its next phase of allocations, which is Phase 1B. Phase 1B, which is, and I'll go through the list in a second, but it also includes citizens 65 years and older. So, people now who are 65 years and older and are members of the categories, frontline workers, the first responders, the first responders are police and fire, corrections officers, food and agricultural workers, the US Postal Service workers, manufacturers, grocery store workers, public transit workers, all people working in education, so teachers in food service, both K through 12, and also the continuing education and post-high school. Childcare workers, those are for the, you know, the church, mom day programs and the daycares. All those people are now in this category that started today. Judiciary employees and clergy and ministers. So, if you're a frontline exposed employee fitting in one of those categories, and you're 65 years and older, it is now time to start making your way to one of these vaccination date locations and work to get your vaccine. The bad news is there are no reservations at this point, and there's not another location today within South Baldwin County that can actually administer these vaccinations. So, a little bit of good news, a little bit of frustrating news, and all we can do is just keep abreast of the situation and trying to get that information out to the public just to the best of our ability.
So, OWA announced that they had some remaining vaccine shots the other day and were open to the public. But you still have to meet this criteria to, to go to OWA and get one of their vaccines. That's correct?
That is correct. This, we're in, today, we started this Phase 1B with 65 and older. Last week, it was still Phase 1A. I think last week they did, if you were able to get there, it's better to have somebody have a shot in the arm than to lose a vaccine. If, if you did go to one of the vaccination clinics in Daphne and got your first dose, OWA does have that second dose available. You have to bring your vaccination card. They'll have a second location within OWA's parking area where they're distinguishing these different lines. And people can get their second doses of the Moderna vaccine, which is what has been issued at Daphne and is now being issued in OWA. So, if you've gotten the first dosage and your time is ripe to go back and get your second dose, go to OWA on either the Tuesday or the Thursday of the dates that I've got on the screen, February the 9th, the next week, the 16th and the 18th, the following week on the 23rd and 25th. And then, they're actually doing the first Tuesday and Thursday in May, in March so far. And they'll add to those dates if we can.
Okay.
So, that was the best I could decipher from this very moving target. Brandon and I were talking just a second ago about how difficult this target is for all of us. I think we all are trying to understand what to do and how to do it, if this is the best of our information.
Well, Grant, thanks for you sharing this information. Particularly residents, they're all anxious.
Yes, sir. Happy to.
And Grant, just to piggyback for the public, it's not open to the public, but we're working with University of South Alabama Medical Center, and they will be vaccinating our teachers either Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday. We'll know tomorrow the exact date. So, our teachers will be getting vaccinated this week as well. So, that's good news. And just a reminder to everyone, we have a board meeting Thursday at 5:00, so tune in. So, sorry for interrupting, Mr. Harris, but just want to give an update.
I was gonna call on you anyway, so thank you for your comments.
Well, it's great that they were able to arrange that for all our city school teachers.
Yeah, yes, it sure is. Thank you for all you do for our schools, Dr. Dyken. Was there anyone else that had a staff report? This is the time for any hearing of persons that was not on the agenda. If there's anyone here that would like to address the council, now would be your time. We have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Thank you. Thank everyone for coming. We'll be here next Monday.